Hello, everybody. Good afternoon or good evening, I should say. My name is Bach Garcia. I'm a enrolled member of the Bonnafon Nation located in southern Arizona alongside the Mexico border. I am with Red Boy Productions. I'm here to showcase a small fashion of Native American culture. Today, this month, as we are here, it is Native American Heritage Month. We are here to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. And with that being said, I'm going to be showing you a style that is called the Grass Dance that comes from the Omaha People of Nebraska. It is a society dance that is carried on for generations and adopted to several different tribes. And with that, I'll be sharing the Grass Dance to Native American Heritage Month. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you very much Bach Garcia, a former student from Bonsac Grande High School, for the excellent performance in honoring Native American Heritage Month. Thank you for coming. Now, we can back to the regular thing. No more exciting stuff.
Please stand for the pledge.
Going to ask our student member to lead us in a pledge.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We are saddened to hear the passing of the GCGOT students Pablo Escobar and Gabriel Pina, a retired teacher, Michael Greer, and retired bus driver and transportation dispatcher, Frances Hedrick. Pablo Escobar were a Pacifica High School Life Skills Program students who strength, kindness, and friendship touched everyone who knew him. Pablo faced enormous challenges in his life, including overcoming cancer trials and enduring two kidneys transplant, yet he met every obstacle with courage and determination. Pablo loved learning and took great pride in his hard work and accomplishment. Some of his happiness school memories were made working in the Mariner Cafe and Cafeteria, participating in the Unified PE and Concert Choir, and on few trips to places like Knottberry Farm and the Bowling Alley. Outside of school, Pablo enjoyed listening to his favorite bands on YouTube and playing games on his tablets. He especially cherished time spent with his family, whether on a party or cheering for his beloved daughter and radio. One of his most joyful moments was watching the daughter win the World Series, a season he celebrated with pride and excitement. Pablo's resilience inspired classmates, teachers, and all who had the privilege of being part of his war would be greatly missed. Gabriel Pina was a ninth-grade student at Montreuil Special Education School. He is remembered as a sweet and friendly student with a big heart. He delighted in connecting with others, and although he was unable to speak, he had a speaking device and used it frequently to ask for hugs and from those around him. Gabriel was full of determination and enthusiasm, even though he was wheelchair-bound and he worked tirelessly to move around in the classroom independently. Each day that Gabriel entered the classroom, he brought with him a joy and energy that changed the atmosphere instantly. His enthusiasm and infectious spirits would be deeply missed by all that knew him. Michael Greer began working for the district as assigned teachers at Garden Grove High School in 1998. In 2003, he became a teacher on special assignment, supporting science, professional development, and curriculum until 2004, when he returned to the classroom, this time at Rancho Alameda's High School, where he remained until his retirement in 2018. Mike was essential part of the science team at Rancho. He always brought joys and laughter to their meetings and was sometimes something of a spirit leader, leaning into a spirit which especially group custom for Halloween, well liked and by staff and by students alike. He is the reason for the whole department has green and yellow knee sock with the signs emblazoned down to the sign. Michael is survived by his husband of 27 years, Dave Eaton. He was a union representative, current treasurer for the Retired Teacher Association, book club member, gamer, best friend, son, brother, uncle, great uncle, and quietly philanthropist. Due many causes, he felt passionate about, and he is greatly missed. Frances Hedrick was beloved member of the transportation family. She began her journey with the district in 1990 as a substitute bus driver and be dedicated over 15 years of service, retiring in 2006 as a transportation dispatch supervisor. Frances were known for her patience and deep care for her coworkers and driver, someone who truly had her heart in her work. Colleagues and remember how considerate she was and how she was always willing to help. In retirement, Frances enjoyed being with her extended family, participated in her church community in gardening, cooking, and reading. Her kindness touched many, and she will be deeply missed. We extend our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Pablo Escobar, Gabriel Pina, Michael Greer, and Frances Hedrick. Our moment of silence now begins. Moment of silence now, Aeneas. Please be seated. Thank you. We're going to begin our presentation for the meeting. Yes, I want to invite Assistant Superintendent Jason Bevalca to present our Employees of the Month.
Good evening, Board President Nguyen, Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Mafi, staff, and community. I am pleased to recognize our November Employees of the Month. As you know, our district is filled with amazing employees, but these two definitely stand out. GGUSD's Employee of the Month program is designed to recognize employees who put others first, go above and beyond to make a difference in their role, carry out each day with a positive attitude and strong work ethic, and demonstrate innovation, leadership, and passion for their job. Our two Employees of the Month definitely have demonstrated this for sure. Our Classified Employee of the Month is Christine Ditzler Martin. Yes. She's an Instructional Assistant to at Allen. Christine joined the district in 2012 and has served as an Instructional Assistant to supporting special education students at Monroe, Northcut, Peters K3, as well as Allen, and presently serves there where she's been since 2019. Christine was nominated for this recognition by several staff members who said Christine really cares about each student's academic and emotional well-being and that she goes above and beyond to meet each student where they are. She has a way of knowing what students need and is always there to support them in the kindest way without making students stand out or feel embarrassed. She is stealthy, moving from room to room to students without any interruptions. I like that stealthy. One teacher shared that Christine helped support a student having a medical emergency, jumping into action with a calm demeanor, and staying beyond the school day to make sure everything was taken care of. Christine is a wonderful asset to the Allen community and is loved and respected by staff and students alike. Congratulations, Christine. Our Certificated Employee of the Month is Feng Tao Din, and she's a teacher at McGarvin Intermediate. Tao joined the district in 2016 and serves as an algebra and Vietnamese teacher at McGarvin Intermediate. Tao is nominated for this recognition by two students who shared that she is an encouraging math teacher who does an amazing job elaborating on instruction to ensure student understanding. One student said she would go way out of her way to give students like me the opportunity to correct their assignments. She always seems, excuse me, sees the good in students and believes all students can succeed if they try. Another student shared that her positive personality cheers students up because she is very, very encouraging as students enter her classroom. The student went on to say that her personal story, excuse me, of overcoming adversity to become a teacher and now giving back to her own is really important to their parents as well. The student shared that on top of teaching math, she is also the National Junior Honor Society Co-Advisor and Pentathlon Coach, always planning events and supporting students in these programs. It's clear that Tao has a passion for teaching and is inspiring students to reach their full potential. Congratulations to Christine and Tao, who are joined here by family, friends, and colleagues. I see a lot of fans, too, yes. We're now going to show a quick video to spotlight so you can see these exemplary employees in action. After the video, we'll take some pictures as well with the board.
Thank you so much for nominating me for Garden Grove Unified's Classified Employee of the Month for November. Here at Allen, I work closely with the students and TK through sixth grade. I support all of our students in whatever ways they need, helping them stay engaged, breaking down tasks so they feel more manageable, giving one-on-one attention, and cheering them on along the way. My favorite part of the job is just working with kids, knowing that I get to make a positive difference in their day and hopefully in their lives. They teach me just as much as I teach them, and it's a privilege to be part of their growth. Being named Classified Employee of the Month is an honor. It means that the work I do on a daily basis is being noticed by others in a positive way, and that feels amazing. I'm grateful to work with such caring teachers and staff who put their hearts into helping our students succeed. This really is a team effort, and I am so proud to be part of it.
Congratulations, Christine, for this nomination and award. You truly deserve it, and I'm so happy for you. I met Christine for my first year of teaching, and right away, I knew she was someone extraordinary. She has this beautiful gift for reaching every student she works with, and she pours her whole heart into everything she does. Christine isn't just someone who helps students, she advocates for them. She stands up for what they need, she believes in them when others might not, and she gives countless hours to make sure every child feels supported, valued, and loved. Christine, you make such a difference in the lives of so many, and we are so lucky to have you.
Christine, congratulations on earning Employee of the Month. We are so proud of you, and it is very well deserved. Working with you brings to mind the quote, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." You exemplify what it means to elevate a classroom through collaboration and empathy. Our classroom is stronger, more supportive, and more joyful because of you. You show up every single day in countless of ways, often quietly, always intentionally, and those moments create a tremendous impact on our students and our team. Thank you so much for going above and beyond for your professionalism on a daily basis and for being such an incredible teammate. Christine, you make a difference, not just in what you do, but in how you do it, with heart, integrity, and genuine care. It's noticed and always appreciated.
To be recognized in a field of extraordinary employees is an honor of mine, and I'm grateful and thankful for the nomination to be the Employee of the Month in the month of November. What gets me up in the morning every single day is the energy and the faces of the kids that I get to interact with every single day. They are my inspiration, they challenge the way I think about the ever-changing world, they inspire me to be a better person, and also teaching me how to adapt to this new world every single day. I try my best to encourage them to be a member of the community because I went to school in this community, I grew up in this community, and to be able to come back and be a part of the Garden Grove community and serving the students who, you know, was in my exact situation years ago is a great honor. I always say I stand on the shoulders of giants, of teachers who've inspired me along the way, amazing Garden Grove teachers, colleagues who inspire me to be better every single day and be the best that I can be. And so, at the end of the day, I'm just super thankful to be recognized with this honor, and it's just not the work of myself alone, but my students, my colleagues, and the teachers and the people who help support me along the way. Thank you.
Congratulations, Tao, for being the November Certificated Employee of the Month. It's certainly an excellent and well-deserved honor. We have a saying here at McGarvin that McGarvin Owls are wise. That's our belief, and Mrs. Din exemplifies that. W is for being welcoming, and Mrs. Din daily welcomes her students into class. She, I is for improving every day, and she encourages students to do that and reflects on her own profession to be able to do that herself so that she is even better for her students. S is being socially aware, and so she sees kids and helps kids if they're struggling with regard to their academics and does a lot of things with regard to the school to support our initiatives, our programs, and spends a lot of time after school with regard to those things for clubs and groups and homework support. And E is being ethical, which is doing the right thing, and Mrs. Din certainly does the right thing with taking her profession seriously and having a heart of gold to support students learn. Again, Tao, congratulations for being the Certificated Employee of the Month.
Congratulations, Ms. Din, for being the Employee of the Month. For me personally, I think what makes Ms. Din such a great teacher is because she's actually more than just a teacher. She's also a mentor, and she makes learning fun and engaging. She helps her students out whenever they're having any trouble, and that's just why I think she's just overall a great teacher.
We're going to take a short recess to take a picture with the honorary. We also want to invite Bach Garcia to stay and take a picture with us as well. And we continue our break. Feel free to leave the room if you have some more exciting thing to do. The rest is going to be very routine. We're going to resume our meeting today. Going to continue our agenda next with our public comments. Can I may ask if anyone request to speak?
Yes, we have three.
Thank you. We have requests from Mr. Lupe Lopez.
Thank you. Good evening to every members of the board. I'm going to speak from the heart. I'm a member and a resident, homeowner of the city of Garden Grove. So, Mr. Nguyen, we're really going to get excited tonight. We've been excited with the celebration of Native American Heritage Month. Members of the board, this is November, we celebrate Native American Heritage Month as a reminder of the existence of Native Americans. Native Americans have been existence from time immemorial. Native Americans have been the first people who have been the examples of public education. Mind you, Native Americans, Mr. Nguyen and members of the board, is that has been historical trauma. Native Americans have experienced something called boarding school, where it was forced education, forced to change from being native into being a white person. And that is a history. It's a very sad history, but as community and as parents, we have changed that. We have changed that through movements such as American Indian Movement. We've changed that through advocacy of parents. We've changed that because we've been given the opportunity to come to public comments. And 10 years ago, folks, 10 years ago about that, I came here with my children. Bach was just a young child, and we made changes to say our Native American kids are not graduating from school. Our Native American kids are not graduating and going into college. Our Native American kids have the highest absentee rate, highest truancy rate, highest suspension rate. But we made that change because of this beautiful school board that said that we would apply for Indian education. We applaud Member Munaton, Member Rocco, and as well with you, Member Mafi. It was those times, if you can remember, we applied for federal funding for Indian education. And what does that mean? That means that as American Indians within the Garden Grove Unified Schools District will be given a grant to make sure that every American Indian child would not be left behind. And you say, is that a privilege for American Indians? No, my friends, no. It is a political right. And what does that mean? It is agreement from government to government entities. And where has American Indians thrived today? We are thriving economically, and visibly you can see it through our casinos. I see many of you there. But we are thriving for the fact that when an American Indian graduates, by law... But we are thriving for the fact that when an American Indian graduates, by law, we as American Indian, by race, we can wear a feather on our cap when we graduate and we walk down that way of our graduation. And also that our, our American Indian people, through the American Indian Feather Alert, that no one will be going missing anymore.
Ms. Lopez, but I do allow to speak. I do make an exception for you to speak. Please continue your statement.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Thank you. And so by Assembly Member James Ramos, he advocates for American Indians. And we want each and every one of you, members of the board, you and the audience, be an ally for American Indians because we're a small population, but we are mighty population, and we still exist. And thank you to Garden Grove Unified School District for your heart and your ally and your love. Thank you. Blessings.
Members of the board, Dr. Mafi, I'm Nicholas Dibs, as you know. Couple of things. First off, I have a number of items, but I'm going to start off with, back at the Garden Grove, City of Garden Grove had a, had a meeting, a city council meeting back on May 27th, and an item came up from the Public Works Director for a welder, a welding contract. And there was a question by Mayor Klaufenstein, which I thought was very important relating to welders, and I'd like you to hear it.
This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
This is Bill Murray, the Public Works Director.
I have a quick question for you. Why only one person bidding on this? I've noticed that now over the last two items. Is this, is this a rarity? Is there a reason why more people aren't bidding on these projects?
We have a lot of college graduates. We do not have a lot of trade graduates.
Understood.
Okay, so that's Bill Murray responding to the mayor back on May 27th. So, I started off running for school board back in 2016 because you cut the last two wood shops from the last two of the 10 intermediate schools. You've brought back trades to one of the high schools of the seven, but you need to do more, and this is an example of that. We have a shortage of skilled workers. I've been telling you that for over nine years. Yet, you've only brought back trades to one school, which is a high school, and you've ignored the 10 intermediates, which should have some sort of a rotating class on CTE. So, on our CTE, not just the one you have now where they make robots, but the one where they're going to learn what we used to have, which is working with wood, metal, get some electrical, plumbing, whatever. Now, how does that, let's fast forward to recently. The district sent out a survey to the parents and perhaps the students, asking what are their suggestions for CTE. I've been asking that you be more specific and send out another survey, especially to the senior class people or high school students, asking them and intermediates, would they like to have shop classes? That is, because a lot of the, we haven't had these classes in the intermediate school for, for like over 10 years. So, the question is, you, you sent out a survey. If they don't even know it used to exist, they're not going to put it down on the survey. So, please ask them, would they like to see our trade class, skilled trade classes, come back to the 10 intermediates or any of the intermediates, and more of that in our high schools? I'm running out of time, and I have another important comment, but I'll have to wait, I guess, for the next meeting. Thank you very much for, for listening.
Another request is from Chae Lin Abarado.
Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and community members. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. I'm here because our first grade students are facing a situation that has become unsafe and is compromising their learning on a daily basis. In my child's classroom, there's a student with significant special needs. I want to emphasize that this child deserves understanding, compassion, and proper support. This is not about blaming him. This is about ensuring that every child, including him, is placed where they can be safe, supported, and successful. Right now, that is not happening. This student has frequent violent outbursts that often involve hitting, grabbing, or throwing objects. Even with supervision in the classroom and playground, other children are being put at risk. These are small children. They should not be afraid of being hurt in their own classroom or during their recess time. Beyond the physical danger, the learning environment is breaking down. Instruction is interrupted every time there is an outburst. Students are losing valuable learning time, minutes at a time, multiple times a day. That adds up to hours of compromised education each week. Many students are becoming anxious, distracted, and fearful. This is impacting not only their academic progress, but their emotional well-being. And this situation isn't fair to the child who is struggling either. He clearly needs a classroom designed for students with higher levels of support, a place with specialized training, structure, and resources that can help him succeed rather than constantly being overwhelmed. Right now, we have a class that is unsafe and a child whose needs are not being met that helps no one. And if this is happening at my child's school, I can only assume that it is happening at other schools in the district. I am asking the board to act urgently. Please evaluate the student's placement and move him to an environment where he can receive the specialized support he requires. And please ensure that the other children in the classroom are given back what they deserve and are legally entitled to, a safe, stable, and effective learning environment where they can focus, learn, and grow without fear. Thank you.
Mr. Abarado? Can I, I'm going to ask one staff to kind of get more information, the school, and some information so you can follow up on that. Okay? Thank you very much. Can one staff get information? Any requests? Okay, next item on the approval of the minute from our last meeting. We have the minute from the meeting, last meeting on October 7, 2025. Any comment, correction? There will be none. Let's call for the vote.
Student trustee Kristi Gettichu?
Yes.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munaton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
I'm staying.
Chairperson Lan Nguyen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item three under agenda is public hearings, presentation, and report. First, we're going to begin with the public hearings. We have the public hearings on the initial contract proposal from the supervisory unit. I'm going to open up the public hearing now.
We have one comment submitted.
Yes. That request is from Mr. Nicholas Dibs.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to comment on, on some things that should be included in the contract, and I'm, obviously, the contract is between the district and the supervisory unit. But as a member of the public, I'd like to ask that you include some language in the contract dealing with not only this contract, but the contract for all administrators. And that is that we, right now, under Board Policy 3120, if there's a complaint against an administrator, whether he or she is the superintendent or at a lower level, ultimately, that complaint process goes to the superintendent. And it says on, in the, in the administrative regulation 3120.1, that the decision of the superintendent shall be final. Now, I think in the supervisory contract, there should be language, something on the order of that there should be, depending on who the administrator is and what level and so on, but particularly at the director level and above, but even for principal and above, that, that the board would have the option to bring in an independent investigator or, or, or an ethics officer, but somebody who's independent. Because the administrators should not be investigating themselves. You, the board, should have an independent lens on serious allegations that might be leveled against any administrator. And to depend only on your staff to investigate the staff is not right, especially when there's investigations needed at a high, at high-level people. So, I've asked that before, and I'd ask you to please adopt the policies that I've submitted, the policy I submitted for fair investigations, so that this contract, as well as contracts for your assistant superintendents and your superintendent, include language that the board may, at its option, bring in an ethics officer or and/or an independent investigator who has no ties to the district or to the employees involved regarding investigating. So that you, the board, have an independent lens on what, what happened or what was alleged. And so, I have copies here of what I submitted prior, and I'd like to propose that you include that language in, in this contract, and it's to establish a fair and ethical investigation. So, I'll provide the copies at the end of the meeting for all of you to have, okay? And I appreciate your listening. It's important that we have ethics and fairness. Thank you.
Any other request to speak?
There are none, but Mr. Dibs, I would like to clarify, as I have before, no, you don't need to come up, that the supervisory unit are not administrators. They're classified employees who supervise others. So, just for your remembrance, they're not, it's not an administrative group. And as I shared with you before, Administrative Reg 3120.1 does indicate that there are many times when we bring in independent investigators. I will send it to you again.
Having no other request to speak, I close the public hearing now. Now, next item of presentation, we have the contract proposal from the GZU, the district, to supervisory unit. I'm going to invite Assistant Superintendent Jason Bivakwa.
We'd like to open up negotiations with our supervisory unit, and we'd like to open the following articles, and as maintaining the current terms and conditions of the 2425 agreement with our supervisory unit, we'd like to open Article 9, Leaves, Article 10, Health and Welfare, Article 11, Wages, and we'll also discuss the calendar for the 2026, 2027 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, come the fun thing. I'm going to invite the district staff to present the data.
Yeah.
Right? The data report, so that everyone know, many of us had a big bite here with, we show all the data, the analysis from the presentation, so it's going to be a fun thing to go through.
Yes. Good evening, Board President Lan Nguyen, board members, Dr. Mafi, staff, and guests. My name is Melissa Seas, the Director of Evaluation and Research, and it's my pleasure to present, along with the team of our wonderful directors, our annual data and instruction update for you this evening. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the various types of data used to inform our district programs, services, and professional development and its alignment to our three district goals. We will begin with district goal one. As you see displayed here, there are two consecutive years of Sback ELA data for our district, the county, and the state. We've had growth from one year to the next, as has the county and the state, but we bypassed both the county and the state for the seventh consecutive year. This holds true for math as well. We had growth from 24 to 25. So did the county, and so did the state, but we bypassed them as well for the sixth consecutive year. In regard to the core districts that we participate with, we outperformed them last year and nine consecutive years, and this year again, in English Language Arts. For math, we also outperformed the core districts for the seventh consecutive year. When we consider ourselves along, among the top 10 performing large California districts, for the fifth year in a row, we have ranked fifth among all other large California districts. This is quite an accomplishment when you compare the four districts that bypass us when you look at the percentage of unduplicated pupil count. Ours is at 81%, and the districts that are ahead of us have a much lower unduplicated pupil count. The California Schools Dashboard was just released last Friday, and Garden Grove continues to show great growth. In chronic absenteeism, we maintained yellow. In suspension rate, we did decline from green to yellow. That was our only indicator that we declined. English learner progress, we improved from orange to green. And graduation rate, college and career, English Language Arts and Mathematics, we maintained green. We have a very diverse district and a large amount of English learners. As you can see, last year, we had over 37,000 students enrolled, and over 11,000 of those students were English learners, more than 30%. In addition to that, we have more than, almost 63% of our students that were at one time classified as an English learner. Some of them are still current English learners, and many of them have reclassified. All of our English learners take the LPAC on an annual basis, and it is out of a four level performance. Displayed on this graph are the most recent four years, and as you can see, our percentages of fours continue to increase, and our percentages of one continue to decline. You can also see the amount of students that take this test each year continues to decline, which shows that we are reclassifying our English learners. The Seal of Bilinguality is an award provided to our seniors on their high school diploma, and it's awarded to students who show bilinguality in a second language. And in 2425, we recognized 606 seals, and for the first time, we recognized one student for American Sign Language. Since 2018-19, we've awarded over 4,000 seals. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce Sandra Valencia, Director of 712 Instruction.
Thank you, Melissa. The offices of instruction continue to use the adopted curriculum for both English and math. Currently, we are in our 11th year of implementation of our math curriculum and moving into our 10th year for our English Language Arts curriculum. If you recall, last year, we shared that the state released their new framework for math and, for the framework for math that allowed us to move into an adoption cycle. We brought in our teachers in 2025 to begin that adoption cycle, and this month, the state released a new recommended list of publishers or textbooks to consider for that adoption cycle. Our teachers will come together in January and February of this year, or this coming year, excuse me, to look at that recommended list and narrow it down to two publishers, which we hope to pilot in 2728. We're currently waiting to hear from the state with regards to the English new framework that is tentatively being planned, sorry, is tentatively going to be released, and if all goes as planned, we hope to bring a council together in 2728 to start that process. We continue to focus in instruction around differentiation and supporting our students with a variety of different, different interventions in the classroom. Therefore, progress monitoring continues to take place throughout the year to identify where those supports are needed, in particular with our special education students as well as our English learners. Continuing to support our students in the classroom is, is definitely something that obviously continues to happen, and in creating an environment where students feel supported is one of our focuses. Our schools continue to analyze the data to help identify where student gaps are, to target the instruction, to make sure that we are monitoring their target the instruction, to make sure that we are monitoring their progress. Supplemental intervention takes place throughout the year, and that can take place with small groups or a variety of differentiation strategies. In addition to using a variety of different digital platforms like iExcel to identify, excuse me, to address the gaps in both math and English Language Arts. In addition to these instructional supports, there continues to be a focus to support our students during our after-school programs, which include our ELOs that take place before and after school. And during our summer, we also offer our summer intervention programs and our summer bridge programs. We will continue to monitor our students and address the learning gaps, and provide students with similar supports. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mel Mathovich, our Director of TK6 Instruction.
Thank you, Sandra. We, don't have a clicker, sorry about that. So one of the main focuses in the district is providing professional development to our amazing teachers that is high-quality, data-driven, and research-based. We support our TK12 teachers in the content, instructional strategies, and student engagement strategies, and provide various opportunities for that PD, such as Super Week, when it's requested by admin at the school site, it can be district-based, sub-release days for teachers to work with TOSSAs, after-school trainings, and TOSSAs also work with teachers at the site in co-planning and co-teaching. So lots of opportunities to develop. And in teacher leadership, we know our district has its success in large part due to our amazing teachers. So we always seek to provide opportunities to build their leadership, and some of those include TK6, a grade-level chair, a 712 department chairs, TK12 site tech coordinators, and our special education coordinators as well. And with that, I'll introduce Tricia Chin, Director of Special Education.
Thank you, Melanie. I'd like to share one of our biggest initiatives in special education, the elementary level, is inclusion. We're continuing to working on our model for inclusion in our practices. And why have we added a additional education specialist? We want to address the high academic and behavioral needs of our students. We also want to work on our students' center scheduling, and this provides opportunity through the scheduling to maximize student learning in the least restrictive environment. It also helps us to implement the IEPs effectively in an in-push-in-and-pull-out model within the gen ed or outside of the gen ed classroom, and to maximize those supports. Equitable access for all of our students, to optimize staff that we have at the site, and be able to utilize everybody there efficiently for our student needs, and to build collaboration amongst our team members, all of the multidisciplinary team members, to support our students and their specific individualized needs. And also provide meaning, meaningful learning opportunities for all our students with extensive specialized support that they need individually. What we've been doing to support our sites is we've had training back and, starting in April 2023, on student center scheduling. We've had West Ed come in and do surveys and collect data. Then we've been having ongoing support for our sites as directors of OSE. We've been going out, meeting with the sites, collaborating, getting feedback, and then coming back and continued to determine how we can best support sites with next steps. We've expanded to additional sites this year to, to add additional specialists, and then we continue to work with West Ed for next steps. And also, we just actually started today, we had a work group with the principals, helping to lead also with their knowledge to other principals on how their, it's been successful for them. So thank you for letting me share, and I would like to introduce Erin Lara, our other Director of Special Ed.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to give an update on our behavior department. Our students still need support with behavior, and so we are very excited. We published our first handbook for administrators, and we are publishing a teacher handbook coming very soon. So we've been very busy providing a lot of training for both gen ed and special education teachers, both at school sites and here at the district office. We've been providing training for parents so they can implement those strategies and structures at home as well. We've been providing training for aides, both in behavior and trauma-informed practices as well. We are still providing school site support, not just for special education students, but for general, but for general ed as well. And kind of newer this year as well, we're providing support for secondary students for more motivation-type strategies there. And I will be turning it over to Marvin Atkins.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, Dr. Moffey and Board. It is my pleasure tonight to talk a little bit about MTSS, or Multi-Tier Systems of Support. It really comes down to three key components. PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. SST, Student Supports Teams, and the process that we follow for that. And RTI, Response to Intervention. When looking at our tiers of intervention, you really break it down into three categories: all, some, one. All is your universal supports that you have at your Tier One. Your Tier Two supports are for some, which are targeted towards certain groups of students working in smaller areas, such as you have your check-ins, check-outs with students, your parent conferences, and then your one, where you have individual counseling, risk assessments, SRO contacts with various students. Then, I, it is my pleasure tonight to talk a little bit about our McKinney Vento, our stay, or homeless youth. Right now, last year, we were able to identify 748 students and families who were identified homeless. This year, due to the increased identification and the supports of our teams, we were able to identify 1,285 students. Tier One supports are supplying our families with basic necessities like food and clothing. Tier Two is targeted support such as mental health, services, and transportation. Tier Three, connection with external agencies for comprehensive assistance. This approach has helped families get the support that they need, especially in this time of need. Next, I'll talk a little bit about our Stop It app. Stop It is an anonymous reporting platform for students and parents to easily report safety concerns via mobile app, website, or phone. This platform is available to our community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I know. Stop It empowers students and staff to keep students safe. See it, hear it, stop it approach. If someone sees or hears something concerning, they can report it anonymously to prevent harm. Last year, we had 1,098 reports through Stop It. This year, so far, we've had 177. As you can see, we have 40% bullying, 20% drugs or vaping, and 40% other serious concerns like self-harm. This data highlights a wide range of issues students face, and the importance of Stop It in promoting safety and well-being for our students. Now, I'd like to return it back to Melissa.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In alignment with our District Goal Two, we administer the Strategic Plan Survey on an annual basis to all three of our stakeholder groups, students, parents, and staff, and you can see the amount of surveys completed by each of our stakeholder groups last year. These are the highlights from each of our stakeholder group, the sentiments that had the highest percentage of agree or strongly agree by both, by parents, students, and staff. And the overall opportunities, the three questions that receive the lowest percentage of agree and strongly agree, and you can see some of these are recurring from previous years, even though they are improving in their positive feedback, they are still recurring And now, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Nguyen, Director of Information Technology.
Thank you, Melissa. Our district uses Parent Square and the Ares Parent Portal to communicate and stay connected with our families and students. Parent Square allows us to deliver messages to parents and students through text messages, voice messages, email, and mobile app notification. It also gives our family control over how often they receive district messages. They can choose to instantly be notified or a daily digest. More importantly, messages can be delivered in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Korean, Arabic, ensuring accessibility for all families. As shown on the slide, email remains the preferred method of communication for our parents. 74% prefer to receive email notification, while 27% prefer text messaging, and 34% prefer app notification. Parents are able to select multiple communication methods, giving them the flexibility on how they want to be communicated. In terms of usage, we delivered over 950,000 messages, posted more than 43,000 updates, and sent 4,354 smart alerts, which are brief reminders such as school closure, early release, emergency notifications. The Ares Parent Portal is another essential tool that helps parents stay engaged in their child's academic progress. Accessible on the web, through a smart app, or, or the, available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Korean. Through Ares, parents can review class schedules, grades, attendance, and other important academic information, and also perform online registration. Thanks to the dedication of our school in supporting families, our parents' sign-up rate for Ares Portal has reached an impressive 99.76%. We are excited to see such strong family engagement in supporting students' academic success. And back to Melissa.
And finally, our District Goal Three. We have a lot to celebrate with our students as they round out their education with us and move on. As you can see, our graduation rates continue to be highly competitive with the county, and we bypass the state consistently. In regard to advanced placement assessments, in 2425, we administered more exams, we had a higher pass rate, and a higher average score rate. This one is probably the most exciting, Dr. Moffey's doing a little dance. Our A-through-G rate for 2425 was 65.1%, the highest it's ever been in history. So quite an accomplishment. We outperformed the county and the state, and that's been happening for a few years, but you can see, we really had a marked increase in 2425, and we're hoping to continue that. When we follow our students when they leave us, this is an eight-year trajectory or pathway of students, and we have 82% of our graduates who start at a four-year college and complete a four-year college. In regard to students who begin at a two-year college and transfer and complete a four-year college, that's 23% of our students. Both trajectories outperform the state. As I shared earlier, we follow our students once they leave us after high school to ensure that they not only enroll in college, but persist and continue to graduate. Approximately 86% of our graduates, graduates enrolled in college for a first year and returned for a second year, and 95% of those students who enrolled in a four-year returned to a college for their second year. So we have very high persistence rate. And many of our stories of our graduates that come back and work for us in many capacities, avid tutors, CCMP, college workers, and eventually even come back as teachers. And as you know, we have our proud college-bound seniors all out, all across the community, recognized for their achievements on the light pole banners. We couldn't end any other way except with a bragging slide, and we have a lot to be proud of here in Garden Grove. I think our biggest accomplishment was one last year, where we had 10 elementary schools recognized as California Distinguished Schools. That is 23% of all of the distinguished schools in Orange County, and we only make up about 6.5% of the county. The only other district that had more California Distinguished Schools than us is LAUSD, and they're 10 times larger than us. That concludes our presentation for this evening, and at this time, we would like to open up to the board for any questions.
I have one question. I noticed that the Stop It program that we're using, I noticed that a number of incidents this year is substantially lower than the last year. Did anyone look into to see what happened if we got, since we got into the second year?
We've had some conversations with our student groups. I think one of the things we saw last year was, we saw more minor episodes, like I saw a lot of like pencil stealing in class, which isn't quite, you know, what we wanted for the Stop It, or, you know, my friend's not my friend anymore, and so we've had more significant issues. So even though it's a smaller number, we also are comparing a partial year to a full year, and so we'll be looking at that, those numbers at the end of the year, and comparing the types of incidents as well, and provide that information to the board.
I have three questions, but I'll just do one at a time to see if my colleagues have any other ones. Regarding the Seal of Biliteracy and the slide that you had that had different categories of folks that were receiving this award, regarding the Korean Seal of Biliteracy, I noticed that there was only one. I know that Korean, the language is one of our largest speaking groups in our district. I know it's gotten relatively smaller, but we do have a Korean community. I'm just curious as in, one, you know, is there an option for students to receive this? And, you know, what's kind of hindering that?
There is an option for students to receive it. I will say, for a lot of our Korean-speaking students, they're more likely to take Spanish because they have the AP offerings at the two levels so that they can get the college credit. But we do allow all, and I can get some more detailed information for the board, because for those courses, Korean does have an AP test that they can pass. But for Vietnamese, for which there's not an AP, we have an alternate assessment, and in the other languages, for which there's not AP, we would have an alternate assessment. And so they can, they can pursue that, but most of our students, Spanish is the most common language that students are taking because of the AP. And then, as you saw, also, we have some French and other languages as well.
Question?
Go ahead. Yeah. Do you have a question, Bob?
No, but I have a comment, and I think I say pretty much the same thing every year. When I got here, our A-to-G rate was under 30%. In fact, I think the first year I was here, it was closer to 25 than to 30. And to see it now at 65.1, I mean, we've acknowledged, and we continue to acknowledge, that not every child, not every 18-year-old should go on to college. There are, there are students who there will be better pathways for, whether it's the trades and military, or going straight into the workforce. But nobody should be limited by what we've done, and that was the case 30 years ago. And to see the rate now at 65%, I've been saying since I got here, I don't want to see any student miss the opportunity to go to college because we didn't provide them what they needed to get that opportunity. After that, it's on them and on their families, but it shouldn't be, it, we shouldn't be the cause if a child doesn't make it to college. And to see that rate now at 65%, I just think is amazing.
I echo that, and then this is very, I followed this trend since I first came into the board, and I saw that at a seismic shift in the philosophy. I think Dr. Moffey were really instrumental in that, and it began with the placement from the counselor. And then, the difference is, before that, I said, what course, what thing you want to take? It's up to the student to take whatever they feel like it. And then, suddenly, it changed that. Okay, you can take this class, don't worry, if you get in trouble, we'll be there to help you. So they push it to their capacity. So of course, many students don't like it, many parents worry about, you know, the children may go crazy. But then, we push them to, to their- But then, we push them to their capacity. And I attribute that pushing to the limit there to the philosophy that we engage in over so many years. And I know Dr. Mafi talked about that very early on when she was the director of instructional thing, and she saw that. And now we're shooting that. It's not surprising. See, another comment I want to ask is, I want to add to this is that, you know, over the years, I know we perform, we do very well, we do spectacular in terms of academic performance, but one thing I'm very proud of the fact that we outperformed the county consistently. It's for people who understand, I'm just a layperson, I got to understand hard work is that. It's easy to outperform the state, but it's not that easy to outperform the county because the Orange County is still a very affluent county, still very less diverse. And we put our kid to tackle those two criteria. We beat them every day and every year. That's very important, and that is the number. And I really look to see how far we outperformed the county. I credit a lot to the commitment from the staff. We're doing a lot, we're doing so many P's together so that we can get to that level that we see today, very consistent every year, and we're proud of that performance.
Yes, thank you. I'd also want to echo those same sentiments, seeing that graph keep going up and up and up. And I think it's a testament of where we are going as a district. And it's always great to see all the hard work that's gone into it because, you know, me as a student back in two thousand and five in Santiago High School, that's when you started to see there was going to go towards an uphill trajectory. But even then, I had instances where students like myself, I'll speak for me specifically, was told I should take four years of PE because any other subject would be too difficult for me to pass. I remember those kind of conversations were being had with students that looked like me, that lived in my community. And it's definitely unfortunate, and this was only twenty years ago that that happened. So the way that we're changing the culture, we're seeing it with the statistics. And then when my siblings, my brother and sister, attended the Santiago back in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, you know, we had not only discriminatory practices in the school system, but also statewide with AB one-eight-seven, when there were statewide targets towards our Latino community. But I think as a district, by having great leaders such as Dr. Mafi, Dr. Sanchez of Santiago, that spearheaded the cultural shift that was needed, I think it's a testament. And kudos to President Nguyen and Vice President Harden for helping enact that change. So kudos to y'all. Back to the questions. Regarding elementary sped, inclusion, student behaviors, kind of that whole melting pot, and kudos to the work that y'all do. It's not easy work. That being said, though, as we heard from one of our speakers this morning, my question is, because I know you touched a little bit on training, training opportunities for our educators. I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, super week is an optional thing. It's not something that teachers have to go. So my question is, how can teachers access these trainings that can help them deal with the systemic approach of inclusion and their situations? How can we ensure that they take these trainings if things like super week are not mandatory?
So super week is not because it's outside of the contractual year, but we have launched, and under Steve Uden's team, we've launched, we just had our second series. So we identified all of the teachers, general education teachers, in addition to continually training special ed teachers, who had students that had a behavior plan. And so proactively, starting in September, they had a series of training, they just finished the second round of it, to review with the IBI team. And it's a release date, so that means people do attend. When they're released to attend, then it's a mandatory attendance versus if it's after school or if it's during super week, then that's something that someone would choose to go to. And so we wanted to get on top of it by saying, who are the folks? Like, I might be a first-grade teacher, and it's September, but I have a student that last year in kindergarten had a behavioral plan. So they're going to this series of three sessions. The first session was focusing on the strategies to use in the classroom. The second was understanding the psychology behind and what triggers the behaviors, and then having those teachers work together in teams to develop plans. And then the final one will be the pro act training that will be provided to teachers as well, and that's for our general education teachers. In addition, as the board authorized to the tune of about eight million dollars, we added additional educational specialists to the elementary schools, such that the average caseload is twelve-to-one now at elementary, where it used to be twenty-eight-to-one, and in most districts, it remains twenty-eight-to-one. And then we also added an additional IBI team, intensive behavioral intervention. And so there's an additional IBI team member at each of the elementary school sites. So those were all to support. In addition, this year, we launched the Spark Program, which is for students who would not be MS students, candidates for the MS program, but that had, for whom the general ed placement would not be the least restrictive environment to get additional supports. This year, we have third-through-sixth graders in the program, and next year, we're going to be expanding to first and second grade.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that's very good information for the community to have, so I'm glad I asked that. And then my last question, well, not a question, it's more of a comment and a kudos. Marvin, do you mind coming up and just so I can have a visual of the McKinny-Vento slide that you had with the numbers? I think that's going to be the McKinny-Vento numbers. If you can have that slide just for a visual for me so I can see the numbers and the board can just have a recap of that. So McKinny-Vento is definitely something that I'm very, very passionate about. I remember having a meeting with Dr. Mafi, maybe one year into my term on the board, and we looked over McKinny-Vento numbers, and it was well below the seven forty-eights. There were some schools that were reporting one, two, three students, where we knew that there was nowhere near that number. It should have been a lot higher. And we've had, thanks to the support of the board, just massive supports with our mental health support teams all across the board. So I want to just highlight the funds and the efforts that we put in as a board for mental health. This is coming into fruition. This is not just something that we said, oh, yeah, we have millions of dollars, let's just invest it in mental health and social work. These are our social workers that are working day in and day out, that are identifying students. And just in that year alone, almost doubled the identification. And that didn't just happen by accident. That happened because we had our social workers specifically target our McKinny-Vento students. So Marvin, kudos to you, kudos to the team. These students are the ones that need us the most. These are the ones that are going to get us from that sixty-five percent, possibly up to the seventy percent. But we need to believe in them. We need to give them all the support we can. So kudos to the board for investing the time and the money to those kudos.
And for the purpose of people who might be watching online who have no idea what McKinny-Vento is, can we get?
Yes, and actually, I was going to address that. So McKinny-Vento was an act that was designed to support students who experienced homelessness. And homelessness is not defined simply as being out on the street, but also doubling and tripling up, living in temporary housing, living in a motel. And so one of the things that the Office of Student Services did was to rename it. So even though technically it's called McKinny-Vento, we call it now the Stay Program. And we talk about homelessness, and we talk about doubling and tripling up and being temporarily unhoused or housing with someone else in a different manner to reduce the stigma so that folks will self-identify and so that we can provide the needed supports and services. So McKinny-Vento is an acronym. It's two legislators after whom it was named, but it's addressing homelessness in a variety of formats. In some communities, that looks like people living in their cars, which we do have some, but in our community, it's more doubling and tripling up in single apartments or small areas.
And if folks are fans of Kobe Bryant, what I will use his famous quote is, "Job's not done. We can still do more." So I want your guys' team to keep at it because the job's not done. We can do more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more comment I really want to make, which is, I'm very excited to see the number of accounting of parent, accounting of half, account to the communication method. For a long time, I was working on this. I always sought to excuse that parents don't have computers, parents don't have internet at home, parents don't have technology. They're all kind of excuse, all kind of reason for nothing. But now, look at the rate of ninety-nine point seven-six percent. We may as well declare that a hundred percent because there will be some people who refuse to use it. Even in my day job, there's some client who don't use internet or phone or anything. I had to literally drive the car to bring the document in front of the side. Some people are just like that. So that happened. So I'm very impressed at the number of, let's say, a hundred percent here, that that speaks volume of the commitment from the school site staff. I know every time New Year, when they register a new student, and then the school site had to roll out a copy of the computer to kind of line them up, help them, train the parent, and do all kind of things so they have a count. With that in place, then that will help the teacher and the staff to have the mean communication information to them. Once they open up that door, the communication goes not only to the parent, it can go to the uncle and grandparent and older brother and sister, who help translate, help communicate that message to the parent as well. Then you can see that magnify the effectiveness of just one account. So I'm very impressed that we have achieved that, and I think we need to have some sort of ceremony to celebrate that kind of achievement. All right, that's all.
I just want to say, thank you so much for your report, all of you putting this together. And probably the thing that I'm going to address is, like Walter and the rest, the A-to-G rates. As a Latina and having been in our system for a long time, and I got to beat Walter a lot of years, in my experience in high school, it was the counselor pretty much that determined whether or not you were college material based on, I'm not sure quite, because we only saw them a couple of times a year of that. And too many kids were overlooked. So I totally am on board with what we did initially to push, push the college-going culture, the pathway to college, at the expense of sometimes not looking at anything else. But there were too many kids overlooked that had the potential, that needed the support. And what you guys did, Dr. Mafi, Dr. Sanchez, and other administrators in starting this movement, was to change the mindset of administrators and teachers to believe in our kids, to raise the bar for all kids and give them the support to get there. You also raised the bar and the expectations of students to believe in themselves. And I see that with my granddaughter. She's an avid, she is not a straight-A student, but she has in her mind, this is her sophomore year, freshman year went well because of all the supports that high schools have now for our freshmen, so much that it gave her the confidence to tackle an AP course this year, a zero period, and do it with, and it's not easy. There are tears, there are tough days, but she wants to do it. She said, "I have to do this. I want to do this. I want to go to college." None of us said anything to her about that because we weren't sure, but it's made a humongous difference. And now we're looking at the rest of our kids with, now that we have a great thing in place, we've made big systemic changes for kids to go to college. Now we're focusing on our kids who might want to go in other direction with focusing on our CTE programs and the pathways. And we can only do that in small steps because we need to see what works, what doesn't work. It's a lot of money. It's a big investment. We have to find the teachers, we have to find the facilities and the money. And it's coming, but it's not going to happen overnight. But it's there, and there's a lot of effort going into that. I went to Kathy Ladd's chili cook-off and car show not too long ago, and Kristin Garland, who teaches automotive technology at Rancho, was given a booth. He brought kids to showcase the program they have in automotive technology at Rancho. So slowly but surely, we are getting out there to showcase what our district is doing and where it's going. And these kids brought these dioramas as a special project they did in class, and we're talking to students and to parents about what they did, about the program, about how it's impacted them. So we're getting there. It took us this long to get the A-to-G rates up. It's going to take us a little while to get our CTE program up and running so that we've got something for everybody. So, thank you.
Need some details.
Yes.
For the Stop It, the elementary school, is the reporting mainly by parents or students?
We have a combination of, sometimes students do, particularly upper grade. We really don't see TKK first graders, first of all, because they can't always necessarily type, and they don't have a phone or a device like that. But we do have some parents, usually the parents will call the school, some of the students, particularly fifth and sixth graders, we've seen, I look at it every week. So we still have had a few of the like, someone stole my favorite pencil type of thing, and then the school acts on those. So when the Stop It comes in, the school sees it right away, but also, they alert us if there's something that's emergent. And that's what Marvin was referring to, the 2:00 AM calls that he gets, because if it's something that's emergent, then he's going to get a call right away so we can call the PD or investigate with the student and do something immediately and not wait till the next day.
Yeah, I noticed that the elementary have less reporting, but in numbers, they have more students. So I was just thinking, possibly because of that age range, they don't have as much things to report.
Usually, they tend to resolve things within their classroom. Remember, elementary students with a single teacher all day who they know at a small school, and the behaviors do change. We're not seeing some of the more sophisticated behaviors that we get complaints about with like high school age.
Yeah, less sophisticated. The second question I have is, for assistance for unaccompanied minors, what kind of assistant do we have?
For unaccompanied minors? An unaccompanied minor would have to have a guardian of some sort, and I can send you some follow-up information. That's not part of our data now, but if a student were to come or to be here, they would have to be in some sort of placement. They might be a foster youth residential setting, they might be with a guardian. So we have some board policies that govern that, and I can send that out to you.
Does that mean sometimes the social services have to be involved?
It depends on the context, yes.
Okay. And do they fall within the McKinny-Vento Act?
They likely would if they're an unaccompanied minor, but I'd have to, I can get you some more information to discern. Some of them would be, some of them might not be.
Okay. And just want to thank staff for a very thorough report, and this is the highlight of me sitting on the board. I love these reports because it tells me how well we're doing at the district, and I think, I would love to boast and take credit, but every time I want to, I can't do it. I get very guilty because I know it's teamwork from staff, and I want to commend you for it. Also, I wanted to, I also have another question. When, you know, we're focusing on this as in general groups, but when we have issue with individual parents, do they fall in this category guidelines, and do we treat them according to this policy as a group, or sometimes we do need to take them out of context based on each situation?
When we have a parent complaint?
Yeah.
So when we have parent complaints, we always, we have a whole process that we follow, but it's always individualized to the needs of the parents. So we have a conversation. If they call to the district office, we have protocols that we follow, following up with them. Sometimes a board member will bring a parent complaint to our attention, we'll follow up with them, we'll have a phone conversation. I'm planning the call. I was going to do it tonight, but it depends how late we go, to Ms. Alvarado. And I usually just touch bases after someone comes to the board. If someone calls or emails, we get back to them right away, and we work with them to resolve the problem.
Right. All right. I want to remind the public that you are always welcome to come to the board meetings. And if you feel like you have reached all the people that you were directed to contact and still you don't think your situation has been resolved, the board is always open to you coming to the public session and speaking about your situation, and we'll try to do the best that we could for you.
Any other comment, question? I want to thank the staff for presenting the presentation. Not only that, you've done a lot of work to bring it all together today. And thank you, Marvin, for coming, for sharing your information. And there's more fun in the data bidders. I understand they post it on a website somewhere, right?
The data is posted on the website.
Not the bidder, but the information that the public can get that.
So, we have more palatable, I've shared with you before, like the LCAP charts and some of the, the more easier to process charts without all of the small data, correct? And our annual report.
And also, item C, no reported information. And now on item four, administration, I need a motion to item four, A through E. I need a motion.
I'll move item four. Second.
Thank you. Item four A is to declare the, the annual organizational meeting. This year, it will be on Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM. That's where the board elect their official and other item annually. Item four B is to approve the recommendation of the eight new community advisory committee voting member for the school year 2025 and '27 term. Endorsed members include Diego Guerrero, Camila Hernandez, Ruby Otiveros, Alyssa Rodriguez, Rosi Sadiva, Teresa Kim, Yuri Lee, and Sarah Hell. Item four C is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Anaheim Union High School District to provide the, the services for, to attend the deaf and hard hearing program with, for the student from our district with the estimated cost to be around fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars for the school year 2025 and '26. Item four D is also to approve the memorandum of understanding with Santa Ana Unified School District, also to provide services to our deaf and hard of hearing program for the student from our district with a cost, estimated cost of around eighty thousand per student for the school year 2025 and '26. Item four E is to approve the recommendation for expulsion of one student for the mandatory expulsion for one year. And any comment, question on any of the items? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Student trustee Christie Gettichu?
Yes, on four A through D, abstain on E.
Thank you. Trustee Dina Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Yes. Item five is program instruction. We have five A and B.
Walter, I move five A and B. No second.
Thank you. Item five A, to approve the representative to the Carl Perkins Grand Advisory Board for the school year 2025 and '26. And the list of approved representative is attached to the resolution. Item five B, to approve the number, a number of our district event. The first event is to approve for J OTC cadet from Pacifica High School to attend the National J OTC Sale Academy in Fiddle Cove, California, on June 19 to 25 this year. Second event is to allow sixty science club students from Jordan Intermediate School to attend the Catalina Island Marine Institute Science Camp in Catalina Island, California, on February 20, 2022, 2026. The third event to allow sixty-five 11th grade average students from Garden Grove High School to attend the Avid Northern California University Visit at some number of campuses in Northern California on February 21 and 24, 2026. Fourth event is to allow ninety 11th grade average students from San Diego High School to attend the Avid Northern California University Visit at a number of campuses in Northern California on March 12 to 15, 2026. Fifth event to allow twenty-three varsity baseball team members from Pacifica High School to attend the 2026 Las Vegas Invitational Spring Baseball Tournament in Las Vegas on March 16 to 19, 2026. Sixth event is to allow forty-five 11th grade average students from La Quinta High School to attend the Avid Northern University Visit, to visit a number of campuses in Northern California on March 29 to April 1, 2026. Seventh event to allow forty-five encore choir students from Pacifica High School to attend the Fame Soul Choir National in Branson, Missouri, on April 9 to 12, 2026. Any comment, question? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Student trustee Christie Gettichu?
Aye.
Trustee Dina Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Yes. Item six and visits, we have long list, so six A to Z.
Trustee Rocco, I move that we accept items A through Z, the whole alphabet.
Any second?
I'll, I'll second.
I still need help, you know that? Item five, six A is to approve bid number 2419 to, for the district to, to approve the thirty-five percent price increase on item seventy-five from the school specialty LLC for the bid number 2419, the project office and instructional supply at the warehouse. Six B to approve bid number 2505 to contract for, for bus transportation as needed from Lux Bus America Company to accept a bid from them, number 2505, valid from November 19 to 25 to November 18, '26. Item six C is to approve, to allow the district to participate in the California multiple awards scheduled with Kelly Spicer Inc. to purchase paper products and office supply valid from February 5, 2024, to June 30, 2030. Item six D is to approve the completion of project at a number of school sites and list attached. Item six E to approve, to authorize the district to participate in the state of Kentucky with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Agreement for the purchase of facility maintenance, repair, and operation and industrial supply for both school size and, and district office as needed. Item six F to approve the lease and leaseback construction project for the Alameda Intermediate Schools awarded to NEF Construction Inc. Item six G is to authorize the district to use the Los Angeles County Office of Education bid number 23 slash 24 dash 1750 as a means to purchase standard school supply and equipment from Kelly Spicer Inc. effective September 1, 2025, to August 31, 2026. Item six H is to authorize the district to participate in the state of Oklahoma with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Agreement number OK dash MA dash A eighteen dash nine hundred to the California participating addendum number seven dash twenty-four dash ninety-nine dash fifty-two dash zero four, with a then number three, supplement and number four, for the purchase of professional grade tools and diagnostic equipment from IDSC Holdings LLC, DBA Snap-on Industrial, and a contract valid for the period from July 1, 2024, to October 11, 2026. Item six I is to authorize the district to use Placentia Yobalinda Unified School District bid number 224 dash zero three as a means to purchase janitorial supply from Grasby Maintenance Supply Company for the period from September 12, 2023, to September 13, 2026. Item six J is to gratify, approve an informal bid number 25 dash 179, 25 dash 140, 25 dash 158, and 25 dash 161 to 25 dash 166 under the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to CSI Electrical Structure Contractor, Inc., JL Carp, Inc., Mural for Schools, SCS Floor System, Taylor Tennis Court, Inc., and Wolverine Friends Company, Inc. Item six K is to approve the request to, for seventy-one point ninety-two percent on average price increase on twelve items from Gold Star Foods to, for the request for proposal bid number 2208 for the first produce, for food services affecting November 11, 2025. Item six L is to approve, authorize the use of tech, ad tech, JBA, IRP, 22 dash, 22 slash 23 dash zero three for the purchase of subscription to the notification system platform from Penn Square with a term condition in the request for proposal effective from May 1, 2024, to April 30, 2029. Item six M is to approve the agreement with Anthem Blue Cross and Anthem ASO for the medical claims processing network access and utilization management services for the district sale insure health plan from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2028. Item six N is to approve the renewal of agreement with ECO Administrative Services for Administration of the District Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan on Independent Care, Medical Care and Reimbursement for Two Years effective January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2027. Item six A to approve or renew of agreement with ECO Administrative Services to serve at the district corporate administrator from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2027. Item six P is to approve the renewal of agreement with the Baldwin Group for Consulting Services to include the legal and actuary advisement benefit plan design, funding analysis, and compliance review effective January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2026. Item six Q is to approve the renewal of agreement with Guardian Life Insurance Company of America to provide group dental care plan administrative services only and network from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2026. Item six R is to approve the renewal agreement with MetLife for the life and accident, the death and that insurance coverage for eligible employees for the continued rate of zero one thirty-six per one thousand effective January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2028. Item S is to approve the renewal of agreement with Anthem Blue Cross for medical claim processing network access and utilization management services of the district minimum premium XMO plan from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2026. Item six T is to approve the renewal of agreement for three-year with CVS Caremark slash HAC for the pharmacy benefit management and clinical pharmacy management services from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2027. Item six U is to approve the renewal of agreement to stop loss insurance with Relia, Relia Star Life Insurance Company, DBA Voyer Financial and Stealth Partner Group, effective January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2026. Item six V is to approve the renewal of agreement with Vision Service Plan to provide group vision care plan administrative services only for the period from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2027. Item six D to approve the disposal of obsolete and surplus equipment and supply as specified in the list attached to the motion. Item six X is to reject the claim from Day Bennett Floor for the alleged property damage sustained on October 6, 2025. And item six G is to approve the purchase. Did I miss anything? All right. Item six Y is to approve the Wilhelm Settlement Legislation Annual Report for the school year 2024 and '25 by the Orange County Superintendent of Schools. Again, we have no claim reported. Item six G to approve the purchase order and check for the total amount of eighty-three million, six hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollar and three cent. And we ran out of the alphabet. Right? That's the end of it. Right? Okay. So, any comment, question?
Still have your voice.
All right, okay. I still have one question. That's a number of items. This is recurring, this is ongoing, with a price increase. I know, I know you, Mr. Fan, Assistant Superintendent here, as planned- I know you, Mr. Fan, Assistant Superintendent here has planned, has shown me this is normal, but I see all the vendor go and ask for a price increase, a thirty-five percent, and now average of seventy-one percent, and some to increase a hundred and fifteen percent. It's on first item. Is there any explanation is there? I know you have explained before, that's the way it happened, that's how the contract are written. We can't get any cheaper out there, but I get very nervous because we set up a budget thing, and they come in and ask for a price increase with that often and that's recurring. Is there something we can look into that we can do something about that?
There's, there is not, unfortunately. Now, specifically with the lettuce products, we have crop issues, as you saw, and that was probably the most extreme. And you might imagine what that might be related to in terms of crops and some of the things that are happening in our fields. But when we do have price increases, we still do look to see if there are any other vendors, and when everybody's prices are raised, what we can do is we can get a little bit more information for the board in terms of the different types of vendors that we have and some of the reasons in each of those respective areas. So like food and agriculture, we know that that's been affected by the current immigration enforcement, but some of the other areas, we'll work on that, Ms. Fan and I.
And when this happened, do we need to revisit our budget? Revisit how things are going and with all this thing going on?
We are always looking at our budget, and that's why we are very fiscally conservative in terms of our expenditures.
Question? All right, okay, haven't none, let's call for the vote.
Student trustee Kristi Gettichu?
Aye.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Lenwin?
Aye. Item seven, she's on personnel. We have item seven A and B. I want to report that we have an item C, we had a process earlier to discuss employee discipline and dismissal with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, Jason Pivakwa. And we also had a conference on the same issue with the labor negotiation, and I want to say that there's no action to report outright. Okay? So now I need a motion for seven A and B.
Move seven A and B.
The second motion?
Thank you. Item seven A is to approve the report on certificate personnel report. Seven B is report, approve the report on classified personnel report. Any question? Have we none? Let's call for the vote.
Student trustee Kristi Gettichu?
Epstein.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Lenwin?
Aye. Going down to the last item closing, we're going to begin our discussion, begin with the student member, Ms. Gettichu.
Thank you. Moving deeper into the fall season, it's been amazing to see the spirit across our campuses continue to grow. From exciting CIF games to creating Halloween events, students have really shown what community looks like. At the same time, our ongoing food and donation drives highlight how that same school spirit can make a real difference beyond our campuses. In addition to this, the Student Senate has been working closely with our administration to form subcommittees that bring in student voices from all backgrounds to better our school demographics experiences. With this, we're committed to make sure students help shape meaningful improvements at our schools while continuing to promote the awareness of the STOP app as a resource for safety and support for students who need it. As we head into our week-long Thanksgiving break, I hope everyone finds time to rest and recharge for the new winter season, and I'm excited to see the progress continue when we return. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Kristi, for the update. And the subdivision of the student government is a really good idea. I have nothing further to say except I wish our staff a good night so that tomorrow they can start our next annual report.
All right, trustee Minetan?
Yes, good evening. Obviously, since, you know, it's been a while since our last board meeting, I have a laundry list of events and community events, school events I've attended, but I won't go into all of them. Just know that during the Halloween season, a lot of trunk or treats. I attended a lot of trunk or treats at various elementary schools. And let me just tell you, this year's theme was Keep Out Demon Hunters, for sure. So if you all know, that's very popular right now. So I attended a lot of those, had a blast. Some of our community members hosted a Dia de los Muertos, a steel craft, some of our parents. I know Terry was in attendance, it was overall a really great time, so kudos to the knitting committee and all those who made that free event possible. I do want to mention and highlight the wonderful performance that we had this evening to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. And, you know, Aldo Lupe, you know, gave myself a shout out, and Terry, I do want to just really give a kudos to Terry and Dr. Sanchez for really, you know, meeting with Lupe and the family and really trying to get a grasp of how we could support. So kudos to you two for really spearheading that. In a couple of days, I think, weeks, the majority of the board will be on its way to Sacramento for the California School Boards Association Conference. That's a once-a-year conference the board takes to go and advocate for our students at the state level, get to meet with other trustees from not just the county of Orange, but also throughout the state, get to meet districts from the rural parts of the town to the larger cities, the urban, the core, everybody. So it's going to be a really great time, and I also mentioned that this is also a great time for the board to really get to spend time with each other outside of just what you see here, you know, so it really creates that team, you know, vibe, and I look forward to every year. Just a reminder for community that the work that we do does not just stop here at the DIES. We go out there and we do a lot of work for the community, so I'm looking forward to that. Looking forward to more holiday festivities as trustee Deana Nguyen mentioned, we have a Thanksgiving break to look forward to. After that, we have the holidays coming up with Christmas and New Years. I'm happy to report that I'm going to be doing my ninth annual Pokemon giveaway this year. Every year since I've been on the board, I've done a Pokemon Christmas giveaway, and it's grown from the very first one to where we only had ten students to now, this year will be my first year doing two schools, servicing forty students in total with Pokemon funds. And I want to give a shout out and a kudos to those that will make it possible this year, Boys and Girls of the Garden Grove, the Garden Grove Police Officer Association, council members Ariana Restegui and Yessen Munyton, as long with President Lon Nguyen will be joining me as well, one of those. So I'm really looking forward to it, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving break to get to reset and spend time with their family and loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Rocco?
Yes, as Walter said, I think it's been, what, six weeks or more since our last board meeting. There have been a lot of events, but I crossed a lot of them out, so I could focus on the most important because I don't want to keep you here all night. But first of all, congratulations to our employees of the month. I thank them for their commitment and for being such an inspiration to others. Also, congratulations are in order to Kate Sedum from Patton, Christine Cordier from Rosita and Suzanne Russo at McGarvin, who were celebrated as semifinalists of the annual OCDE Teacher of the Year awards that are given at the Disneyland Hotel. So we've got some top-notch people in our district, for sure. Then, as Walter said, there was a lot of community events. I was at the Dia de los Muertos. It was the first time in Garden Grove there's been a cultural event for Dia de los Muertos, and it was predominantly supported by our parent leaders. And so I'm very proud of them, and it was well-attended. There was music, there was culture, there was community feel, for sure. And looking forward to next year, so hopefully it becomes an annual event. Also attended the Boys and Girls Club Toasting Great Futures. I think Walter was there and Len. And grateful for the partnership that we've had over the years with the Boys and Girls Club because they've provided our after-school programs, our enrichment programs, and our summer programs as well for countless kids in our district over all these years. I just wanted to bring your attention to, I've attended a fundraiser and dinner dance hosted by a group called the Brown Descents. They're a car club and a 401K, I think, is it called, to raise funds. These funds have been raised over the years, I don't know how many years, I'm just finding out about them for our students. They give scholarships at various high schools, Rancho in particular, and Pacifica, because all of, most of these fellows from the car club are from that area. But they've branched out. I think they also give scholarships to Garden Grove High School, and I'm not sure if Santiago was one or going to be one. They did food drives over the summer for families in our district, and they, from that, have adopted, I think, eight to ten families at Awakam on a whole-year basis. And they're gearing up now to provide lots for those families for the holidays, so I just wanted to get their name out there for you to know that they're very, they've been very generous and with their time and efforts for our families. Lots of school events, I attended the Bolsa Vietnamese Culture Night that was hosted by the VSA group, and it was all student-led, student-run, student-organized. I think Lon was there with me, and they had performances, they had dance, music, and theater, and they did a great job of showcasing their culture. There were various events celebrating fall, celebrating community and festivities for fall. At Pacifica, I think Lawrence had a trunk or treat that I went to. I did attend hair for the first time. I guess they've done this before, they had a PBIS Fall Festival, and it was very well-attended, and the students were very engaged. It was like any other high school. I know the secret, though. The kids were given tickets for their participation in the activities, and that got them booed. And they were very, they didn't look like they were being forced. They were, it was a good way to give them incentive to take that step that they might not normally take socially for some of our kids, and high school in general, but especially at a continuation school. So it was an awesome event. I got to judge a costume contest, so it was a lot of fun. Glad to see those kind of activities at all our schools. Let's see. I attended Parenting in a Digital World at Bolsa, where we had our own cyber safety cop, Clayton, who shared information on online safety and some of the dangers of online interactions and just how to keep your kids safe. He's also authored a couple of books, Parenting in a Digital World and Screen Time Standoff is his latest. I just kind of perused through that, and it gives amazing strategies for maintaining effective communication with your kids and building trust so that you can have those conversations and establish those boundaries for your kids when it comes to screen time. And just, I just, I think it's going to be a big help for parents and grandparents. Anyway, as we try to navigate, you know, parenthood, grandparenthood in this world of technology. So also attended our American Indian program that was hosted by an indigenous, I mean, our American Indian program hosted an Indigenous Day, Family Indian Day event at Patton, and it included storytelling by Jackie Nunez. She comes pretty much, pretty regularly. She's amazing at storytelling and sharing bits of culture and wisdom and has just a very aura about her. It's very, very grounded, very zen, and sharing that with the kids and with adult participants as well. And so I just want to give kudos to Tanya Vina, who helped to coordinate this event, and for always validating and working so collaboratively with our American Indian families. And lastly, just want to say, I attended the PLA, the Parent Leadership Academy, where all our schools were represented by principal and parent leaders, which is awesome to see. It was at the Garden Grove Community Center, the room was packed, and it was led by Dr. Moffey and our district administrators or cabinet, where they focused on why parent engagement or family engagement is so important, and looked at Dr. Joyce Epstein's framework for the six types of parent engagement or involvement, which are very important. For me, that was the book I read before I started working in parenting and community outreach and looked, worked with our administrators at the time at how our district could incorporate all of these steps, because it wasn't just about teaching parents what we wanted them to do to support their kids, but it was about parenting and supporting parents, especially parents from immigrant families who were raised in another culture and another generation, who didn't have the language to navigate the American culture or American language, how important it was for us as a district to communicate. And this is when we started to do the translation interpretation, we got the headsets, so we moved in a really good direction, volunteering, welcoming our parents, making them feel welcome to our schools, and utilizing them as a resource for supporting our kids, learning at home, teaching our parents what they can do at home in their language with simple things that would support their kids at school. Of course, coming to school and learning what we were teaching kids in the classroom, but there's a lot of parents who can't come, but they can do a lot at home and decision-making. And that has grown just leaps and bounds since that time, and we have parent leaders who are now like leaders in the community. They've gone beyond the district and gone into the community, as well as the sixth one was collaborating with community. And so I've seen our district grow and utilize this as their basis for our parent policy. Now we want our schools all to be doing the same things, and so that was, I think, the premise of this. So as they sat at the tables, principals and parents, looking at this and looking at how their schools individually, what are they doing, what are their strengths, you know, where do they want to go, how do they want to add? And now, you're not going to do this all in one year because it took us several years, but for them to take a look and to see, what are we already doing, and what is the next step to getting toward where we want to be? And I think it was a very successful PLA, and I'm looking forward to what we do next. Thank you.
Vice President Harden?
Just a few highlights from over the last few weeks, and I've been dealing with some personal health issues, so I have, I've probably missed more events that I wanted to attend than actually attended, but I did get out for a few. Trunk or treat at Monroe was a highlight. It was a highlight for two reasons. One, there is a group of parents there that make just a killer pot of pozole, and I'm there whenever there's an event at Monroe, and he knows, he watched me eat it. The second is, in thirty years, I don't think I've ever been to an event where there were that many kids and parents. I thought I was going to create a stampede when I gave up my spot in the parking lot for parents that were still arriving, and I wish I could have stayed a little longer, but I had homecoming at Los that night. But the way that the staff and the PTA have driven parent engagement at Monroe is pretty amazing. I wish we could put it in a bottle and ship it to every other school in the district because it is truly amazing, and Walter is a parent there, you know that's true. Second, you know, every spring at La Quinta's Open House, I talked to Michelle Rose, and every year at Open House, I ask her, what's next year's volleyball team look? every year at Open House, I ask her, what's next year's volleyball team look like? And every year, she gives me a sob story about all of her seniors are graduating, and it's going to be a young team, and I'm not sure how we're going to do. And every year, I wind up going to watch her team in the CIF playoffs, including this year, which was a, which is a very young group, only a couple of seniors on that team, so they're going to be good for a while. And maybe her best coaching job in the years that I've been watching them, because she's working with a very young group, who she's still teaching a lot of fundamentals to. You can see it, just watching her as a coach over the years, what she's talking to kids about this year is a little different from what she was talking to them about last year or two years ago. It's because the kids aren't as advanced in their skills and in their understanding of the game. But just, it's been fun to watch that group. It was fun to watch that group this year. These kids had absolutely no quit in them, and every, every match I saw them in, they were behind, and I saw them come from behind and win three times before they finally got knocked out of the semifinals. Then I also got out to see the Los Amigos Boys Water Polo Team play, which is fun, and it's a group of kids that work really hard. I brought a couple of props tonight. One is a ticket from the first musical performance in that beautiful Performing Arts Center at La Quinta High School. It's, it's the first musical play that's been performed there. The last time they did one, it was in a portable, apparently. They did Frozen Junior last week, and it was a lot of fun. And you can tell the kids had a lot of fun doing it. I think Walter was there, the Friday night show. Len and I were both there on Friday afternoon. There's some talented kids in that group. And then I have one more prop in my bag. On Sunday, I was at Barnes and Noble, and I just happened to run into this teacher. Well, I didn't happen to run into her, it's because Abby told me she was going to be there. Amanda Lepara is a teacher at La Quinta High School, who is, is publishing a six-book series. It's, it's teen fiction. The series is called Desert of Dreams. This book is called Dare to Dream, and I have a signed first edition. One more thing, good luck to Pacifica High School this Friday night in the CIF semifinals in football. Thanks.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank trustee Minetan for inviting me to the Pokemon giveaway. That will remind me of good old Pokemon time with Andrew, so I'm looking forward to that. I attend a number of events, but one thing really stood out to me was the opening of the preschool program at Endos. And with that, I don't know, people know that the preschool program is very, very valuable. I mean, I could see with my own eye, the curriculum and how the student behave, how the teacher care for the students, archive them there. But I'm looking back, I remember that time when Andrew was going to the preschool type of kindergarten type of thing. I was struggling, looking for the program, and I would do the quality of the program there, and I could see around me, many parents were very stressful to pay for it, but without need to, they couldn't. But then, now, looking at this program, we now provide a good program, free of charge for many students, and to the science scale for some from parent, then I would jump into it if I have a chance to take the preschool program from our school district, consider the program, the curriculum, the facility, the quiet caliber of our instructors. I want to shout out to the preschool staff for center program, not only at Endo, but I think they did a Skylab too, right? That seminar, yeah, that is kind of, they had a program there. I really admire, just commend them for putting up a very strong program for that. And also, we now, on November, we now looking to the Thanksgiving, we now all get ready for the Thanksgiving season. I'm looking forward to that season with many activity from our school district, especially the feast from Bell Intermediate, so that it will be a fun thing to look forward to. With that, I want to thank everyone to be staff for putting up, carrying a heavy load for the district for our kid. I'm very thankful for that, and I look, thank you very much. The, I, Minetan said the work is never done, so we are continuing to work on our fantastic achievement, and thank you. Without, if I don't see you again, I'm going to say happy Thanksgiving, get ready for that, and we, after that, we get ready for holiday. And I want to announce the next meeting, one after this will be on December night, will be begin with a close session at 5:00 PM, and a third session to follow it. And then one after that will be the year after, like January 20th, January 20th, 2026. That also begin at 5:00 PM with a close session, and then a third session to follow. If no more common, common question, the meeting is now adjourned.
Seniors, come on up.